Time is now nine thirty-five and a quorum of the board, more than a quorum, is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of September ninth, two thousand and fourteen, is called to order. And the first item is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items to add or delete from the agenda? If not, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Supported by John. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. Merz, please.
I'd like to introduce the people seated at the table. To my left is Mike Flanagan. He's the state superintendent and he's chairman of the board. As we go around the table, John Austin is president of the board. He resides in Ann Arbor. Vice president of the board, Cassandra Ulbrich, from Rochester Hills. Board secretary, Dan Varner, from Detroit. Board member, Lupe Ramos Montini, from Grand Rapids. This year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, Melody Arabu. And she is a third grade teacher at Keith Elementary School in the Wald Lake Consolidated School District. And across the table is the governor's strategic education advisor, Craig Ruff. Eileen Weiser, board member from Ann Arbor. Kathleen Strauss, board member from Detroit. Michelle Fecto, board member from Detroit. She is the board's NASB delegate. It's their association. And next to me, the board's treasurer, Richard Zilee, from Dearborn. Thank you.
A year from now, you, less than a year from now, you might have a younger woman in this seat without grandkids, so you won't have to go through this. But this is my way to, this is my way to just get us focused on kids and it's my best way. And so let's just show this quickly and then I want to offer another challenge.
Bit of a one-trick pony.
I'm Mike Flanagan, state superintendent. Everyone's been challenging me to do the ALS challenge, so I give up. I'm finally doing it and I'm doing it with my granddaughters. Ellen Avery, it's Labor Day and Ella's going to be starting school in kindergarten tomorrow, by the way. And, you know, speaking of Labor Day, there's two hundred and fifty thousand people that work in our schools and they do a great job. Teachers can't do this alone. So by the way, another challenge would be parents and community and students working hard. Everyone worked to make a kid's education better and we'll all be better off. So two challenges, ALS and challenge to work as a community to help our kids learn everything they can learn. So happy Labor Day and tomorrow, happy first day of school.
Ready? Oh. Okay. I hope. The grandkids.
I want to hear what you said.
Just made their day. And I got an idea from Leah that I thought I'd use, which is we'd like to issue a challenge that everyone listening today, find time sometime in the next few days to thank a teacher or some other person that works in schools. Find a specific person and jot them a note or give them a call. And that includes a lot of support staff. Some of the mentors I had growing up in schools were often, I had a bus driver that was a great person that helped us. So, we're going to move right to, right to the, no, right to the discussion items. A is the first item and it's, before I bring folks up, just to set the tone for a moment, this is on today's committee of the whole agenda. It's presentation on transitional models for science education. So just a context for folks that are new in our audience, in May, the state board was presented a vision of science education based upon the framework for K-12 science education. And then in August, we presented a presentation on assessment practices in science education. This presentation today continues a review of issues on this very important subject of science education by presenting considerations for the transition of current science practices at the classroom and district level to new models that will better support learning outcomes for our students. So the next steps, by the way, would be additional update on science education each month until we act on those. So presenters today are Vanessa Kieser, deputy superintendent, Linda Ford, director, and Stephen Bass, assistant director. They're going to join us at the table. Thank you, guys.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As Mike said, this is the next installment in a series that we've been doing with the board to talk about science education in Michigan. And as we move toward considering science standards, understanding what the transition to new standards might look like and really trying to, standards are not an end to themselves, but really better education for our students in the, in the content areas that we're implementing standards in. So how would we take these steps toward a different, more expanded vision of science education? We've been doing this series to kind of lay out this vision and this is the, the next presentation there. So I will turn it over to Steve and Linda.
Good morning. It's been pretty well summarized that we're into a process and we're trying to update everybody on how we might improve science education in Michigan and how we might take a look at ultimately improving our scores as well, which is of course a measure of how well that education's going in the classroom. A lot of considerations have to be thought through. We've done some things with you now in assessment. Today's more about the classroom and what it might look like in the classroom and what some thoughts might need to be, some of the things that we might need to think about in order to lead to good science education in the classroom. How do we help the teachers to do a good job? So with that in mind, just a summary, kind of where we were, where we've been, what we're doing. Today, we're going to be talking about all of the things that you see in red, science instruction support, infrastructure, school improvement. We're going to talk about materials, equipment, supplies. We're going to model programs and resources, what those might look like and what the research and high learning practices look like. We're going to spend most of our time on the ones in that lower right-hand part of the oval and talk a little bit about some models because we've heard some questions from you about, well, how would you handle this? What would you do about that? So hopefully, we can answer some of those questions today. Our objectives for today are to provide insight on how educators and schools can transition. Remember that anytime we take a look at good science education or any other kind of educational model, we've got a transition process. So whoops, we're transitioning pages here. So how, how we make that transition and how we help schools be ready for a new framework, how we review policy considerations at the high school, middle school, elementary, and general implementation concerns. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve for some more detailed presentation on how we hit those objectives.
Thank you very much. As you know, when we talked about the vision for science education back in May, one of the things that we talked about was we were really trying to set a vision for what this looks like years down the road. And when we look at the kind of transition that we might expect that encompasses all the different research inputs about what we know strong science education looks like, we're really looking at a process that takes us down the road at least a good six to seven years. This is not going to be a quick effort by any means. It takes a lot of, a lot of effort, a lot of moving pieces to this. Those moving pieces are really taking place here on multiple fronts in schools. They're going to take place, obviously, in classrooms, but we're also going to need systems addressing this. So they're going to take place in buildings and how we structure things there and in school districts as well. In terms of some of the kinds of changes that we can look at, and you're going to see these pop up on the slide, really just kind of randomly, because these things will take place over this next six to seven-year period in different ways in schools. One of the first aspects there is curriculum alignment and revision. This is not a quick process in most schools and it takes a lot of work to see where they are with what they have, what resources they have, and how they need to restructure course offerings based upon teacher capacity, based upon schedules, based upon a range of different considerations. Along with that, another focus for this is on the actual instructional materials that are required. Some of what we're going to talk about today when we look at some different models here are some different ways of addressing gaps that we have had traditionally in our science education. And they require additional materials and models. Sometimes they require incorporation of other practices taking place. You may have seen or heard of MTSS, an abbreviation for multi-tiered systems of support, which is one of the strongest ways that we've seen and that research has shown for reaching the needs of all learners in schools. It's individualized instruction, but it's also building upon systems that we have in schools. We also are looking at other measures that we see in other policy, like growth data for students. So all of these kinds of things really take place at the district level in terms of changes that we need to see. There are other changes that happen at the building level, including professional learning for all teachers. We're going to address that issue a bit more in the next session that we present, but it is a huge consideration for many schools in terms of developing their teacher capacity. Class schedules are another factor that actually will affect a lot of this transition. For the longest time, we've focused on schedules that are uniform in nature, typically at the middle and high school. The nature of science investigation really demands something a little different. And so we're going to need to reexamine what we see in terms of how classes are scheduled during a day. Grading and transcripts are another factor for us to consider. As we look at career and college readiness, more of what we're looking at in, in terms of this gets into the details of the kinds of considerations that we need to have for all students. We can't just have blanket grades for a year that boils down to a single letter of the alphabet representing it. Likewise, colleges and universities are looking at different information in transcripts that's going to need to be encompassed in this kind of transition. Finally, we get to some changes that take place at the classroom level. Teaching assignments are one. Because of the changing nature of science, we have different capacities in terms of teacher knowledge and understanding of various science concepts. So teaching assignments may shift in different ways. We're going to look at some examples of that a little today and we'll look at some of that as well in the next presentation with respect to how it affects credentialing or some considerations there. Class descriptions are another factor that we're going to face. The standard descriptions that we have had for classes, especially at the high school level, in many places have not changed in over a hundred years. They've been modified in little ways, but we still break down content into very traditional subjects of biology, chemistry, physics. We're going to be looking at how the interactions of all of these things may affect the transition for science education over the next six to seven years. One piece that's included in here for the classroom level is parent communication. One of the big challenges of science education is that much of the public doesn't understand the transition that we have and we often rely on nostalgic practices. We want to, we as parents want to go back to the kinds of things we remember seeing in classrooms when we were there. And yet, we know that that is not serving our students' needs most appropriately. So parent communication is going to be a huge consideration over time for this. Finally, the biggest one probably of all, our instructional practices. The instructional practices to incorporate the range of considerations that we're looking at will need to change and we know that instruction doesn't change like that. It changes based upon trying new things in the classroom, seeing what happens with that, seeing what the outcomes are for students, and then modifying our work as we go. This is all a part of this seven-year transition plan that we want to consider. Many of these things that I just addressed are some general things that could apply to any subject. There are some specific considerations around science that I want to address. A lot of the considerations here come from a research base on science education that's been built over several years and was presented most effectively in the framework for science education. When we look at the recommendations that come out of that, we first need to look at how we typically teach science now. The bands that you see in front of you represent the content-based categories that we've often assigned in science. We have the physical sciences, addressing issues of physics and chemistry. We have earth science, looking at issues of geology, hydrology, weather, meteorology, I guess, keep theologies going there. And then we have issues of life science, looking at biology, looking at ecology. These are the typical structure that we've had for science education that have been built over time. As mentioned before, the high school curriculum has typically broken down into some of these areas, in particular, the biology, chemistry, physics sequence that we've had for well over a hundred years. Often when working with science educators, I'll ask, do you know why we have them in this particular sequence? I'm just curious, do any of you know why high school has typically had them in that sequence?
Alphabet.
You're right. That's the only reason. When the report came out from the Carnegie Commission over a hundred years ago, they had no definitive decision for why these would be done any particular way, so they organized them alphabetically. And we've stuck with that for well over a hundred years. These are not pedagogically sound decisions all the time. We've often found ways to justify these, but we need to really look at the core considerations of what is involved in doing science, in doing engineering, and how does this relate to the kind of understandings our kids need to have. These are reflected in some cross-cutting concepts that come across all three of these strands that we often look to as a foundational block for being able to do any work in science. First of all, we focus on understanding and recognizing patterns in the world. The early scientists recognized issues about patterns of the stars in the sky to be able to understand what our place in the universe was and to be able to refine that vision. The same is true for students. Recognition of patterns is a critical piece to understanding a variety of issues of science and it doesn't apply to just one content area. It stretches across spans. Another issue that comes into play is cause and effect. Recognizing that some action can have a reaction in some other way, that when it rains, as we may have tomorrow morning torrentially, that things will happen like the rivers will flood. There's a cause and effect. These are issues that span across all areas of science that we want to build upon for students. Another issue that's a particular challenge for many students is scale, proportion, and quantity. I was having a discussion last night with my daughter, who's taking a biology class, talking about how many cells are in the human body. The notion that we have trillions of cells in our body is a hard one for many people to understand because we don't understand concepts differing between millions, billions, trillions, or as she will like to throw in often, a googol. There must be, if it's so large, there's a googol of them. Well, these are issues that we really need to build upon in all science classes because issues of scale, proportionality, and quantity are critical to understanding our world and they are one of the big misconceptions that we have in science. Kids can see and count things that are in front of them, but when they're so incredibly small or so incredibly large, they really struggle with this issue. Another issue that is foundational to all areas of science is the notion of systems and system models, that things have interactions with one another. Using the example I just mentioned earlier of rain causing the river to flood, we also can place that in a system. Many of us remember studying the water cycle. This is a notion that, again, kids kind of struggle with, but the notion that when that water comes down into the river, it goes somewhere. And somehow, some way, it eventually ends up back in those clouds again. Getting kids to understand how systems work is a critical piece to all areas of science. Yet another one where if left to individual lessons that are often done in classrooms, kids miss out on the full system effect. They only see the pieces of it. Energy and matter is another one, and this is perhaps one of the most challenging ones for students to see because you don't see energy. It's hard for us to observe in ways other than seeing an explosion or representations of energy such as an electrical outlet. But these are areas where students often struggle. This introduces us to another idea that's built into all of these concepts in the framework, which is the notion of learning progressions. Learning progressions are an idea where we look at the developmental capacity of students to be able to understand different phenomena or different concepts in the world. It's really hard for my eight-year-old daughter to be able to understand issues of energy and matter because she doesn't see them and she's at a developmental level where her focus is on what she can see and work with. However, the older students get and the more complex their understanding, the more they can get into understanding abstract notions like energy and matter, which are things we can't necessarily easily see, but they are concepts that we really need to build upon in science. A couple others come to mind very quickly as part of the research on the framework. One is on structure and function, and this is a core component of many areas of science, recognizing that all things have some particular structure and function to what they do in their place in the world or their place in a system. A last one is on stability and change. Many of us have heard of or may remember hearing about Newton's laws of mechanics. A body at rest stays at rest. A body in motion stays in motion unless presented with another force. These are concepts that are at the heart of what we study in all areas of science, recognizing that some things have a tendency to want to stabilize or others have a tendency to want to change and there are different factors that are, that cause this. These are things that we study in science. These are core foundational concepts that often have been missing in science education. Early on, when we talked about where we stand as a state right now and the fact that our student proficiency hovers right around ten to twenty percent, depending on the grade level, is in part because of the focus on these areas, that we often treat these concepts as discreet items to be taught, not cross-cutting concepts that address every area of science. This is one of the big changes that is required in a transition, is a change in mindset around this. There are some other changes that are incorporated as well into the framework. One is recognizing the role of science in society. One of those roles is in developing ideas for the implementation of science in applied ways through engineering and design. Engineering and design is often absent from the current curriculum in most schools or is done as a set of very simple activities, maybe once or twice in a student's entire K-12 experience. Yet it's a core consideration for us to think about, knowing that our society is built more and more upon the foundations of science and technology and the interaction of those things. A second area that weaves in between all of these is the notion of cross-disciplinary integration. I talked before about biology, chemistry, and physics as separate disciplines, but they really aren't. Most of the work that's being done today in any particular field of science integrates these fields depending on what we are doing. One of the foundations of our state's economy beyond automobiles that we've focused on for years has actually been in the area of medical research and of our many pharmaceutical companies. Their work inherently is cross-disciplinary. They're looking at issues of chemistry and biology. What is the impact of this particular chemical on us and how will that fight a disease or deal with some other issue? These are issues of cross-disciplinary integration that we need to incorporate as well. One final piece is the integration of mathematics and language arts. Both of these are foundational to the work of science. As I've often told my, my daughter in her biology class, her biology class is really a class focused on vocabulary. There's more vocabulary introduced in biology than any other subject that we study in range K through twelve because of just the different range of terms that we see. So understanding issues of language arts and issues about reading for information, of being able to understand mathematical concepts of how we do data analysis or modeling are critical components to science education and developing our science education in our state. This is going to play out for us in a few ways and some, these are some of the considerations of a transition. They really break into two key areas, one of them around resource and capacity that we have in the state. Part of what we're going to need to do is look at the instructional materials that we have access to or that our educators have access to and try and incorporate the changes that were presented in the last slide. We also need to introduce more experiences like laboratory experiences or work out in the field for students because this is the nature of what we do in science. Science doesn't happen always in a lab with someone wearing a white coat. In fact, that's quite the opposite of the norm. Some other issues around resource and capacity are teacher background and experience with the content. Given the kinds of changes that were introduced in the last slide, many of the teachers in classrooms now do not have experience working with science in those ways. Many teachers, in fact, have a pretty limited science background, especially in the elementary grades. And that tends to range on a scattering of concepts in science and not those underlying foundational pieces. We're going to address this a bit more, again, in the next session. Curriculum alignment and integration, however, is a key component of this. That is a capacity issue. This requires us to really get schools to examine what's being taught at different grades and to align these things, not only to ensure that we're not stepping on the toes of, of teachers that taught a subject before us, but also making sure that we're not missing subjects and we're building those foundational pieces. When we talked about learning progressions before, it's that notion of trying to build a concept first in, in very simple terms and develop it out to a level of complexity as students progress through our education system. Another key component of this that ties into other work that we're doing in education is around the data systems and learning supports that we have. I mentioned multi-tiered systems of support and in our last presentation on assessments, you saw an example of what the eastern upper peninsula was doing by presenting data on every single student around science education for their teachers so they could better understand what are these kids struggling with, what do they have a solid foundation in, and what do I as a teacher need to do to best support them. Unfortunately, that's not the norm. Part of what we're going to need to do for this around science is build out some of the data systems and other learning supports that we have. Finally, educator professional learning opportunities are going to be critical for all of this. Again, we'll address some of that around teacher capacity in the next session. The other issues that come up are around practice. One of the pieces mentioned earlier is class descriptions and how we just report the information that is learned. There are a number of ways we can go about this and a number of transitions that'll take place, but we're going to need to take into account the fact that information about students is changing rapidly in how it's being used and how it will be used as students progress through to demonstrate their learning experiences. School-based scheduling is going to be a critical piece for a school practice, recognizing that not everything can fit into a fifty-minute class period when you're trying to conduct in-depth in-depth investigations of scientific phenomena. As mentioned, teacher professional learning is a consideration, but also hiring practices. So often, hiring is done in particular schools to replace a particular teacher. You will see postings for things as odd as we need someone with a science and Spanish or a physics and Spanish background who can teach volleyball. Well, schools that are doing that are trying to replace the last person that did this as opposed to thinking about their system as a whole. These are practice issues that are going to affect the transition. Another consideration is seat time compared to proficiency-based assignment for students. Recognition that sitting in a classroom does not ensure the learning takes place, but rather moving towards systems where students can demonstrate their proficiency and be able to move on to more advanced practices that are challenging them in ways. Curriculum oversight and alignment, we talked about this a bit before. This is a practice that needs to be an ongoing effort around science education. And finally, parent communication is a key, critical practice that we need to look at in schools. I want to show just a couple of quick examples of what this transition could look like. One that I want to show is what we might see in an elementary school. Typically, what we're seeing now in elementary classrooms around science focus on doing a couple of units a year. Science is not a key thing that's done every day by students, but rather it's done in bursts of activity. My daughter right now is doing a particular unit on plants that they've just started. Once they finish that unit, she probably won't be investigating anything in science for about another month and a half until the next big unit comes up. This is a consideration for the transition that we have in elementary schools. Often, these practices are based upon things that can be done easily in the classroom or where we might be able to bring a particular animal, in this case, into the classroom for students to study and be able to get some basic science concepts around. Whereas what we really want to move to are those ideas that we focused on earlier of students understanding systems and being able to share their understandings around these concepts. Some of the primary challenges that we're going to run into in elementary schools are the lack of instruction that many schools have, first of all. Many schools have small kits of materials that are designed for that one-time use over a three-week period and then we're done with it kind of practice. Instructional materials for ongoing work in science are going to be a key consideration. Instructional capacity is another one, again, that we'll focus on a bit more in depth in the next presentation, but to understand that many of the teachers, especially in elementary classrooms, have had a focus on either mathematics or reading, in part because of the policies that we've had over the last 12 years in this country. From No Child Left Behind, where accountability in large part was determined by those key areas, efforts around science and social studies education were often pushed to the side. There are many classrooms that I've been in where prior to that time, they were doing some amazing work in science, and now those students study science literally one day a month for about 45 minutes. This is going to be a key component for us. A last piece here that's a big issue is the introduction of those engineering and other science-specific resources that really haven't been used a whole lot, but need to be considerations that we're bringing into the classroom. How we might transition that is now what we want to look at. For an elementary school, part of this will be developing instructional capacity over time. There's a lot of ways that this may happen. It may be that schools start hiring science-specific teachers, recognizing that the pool of teachers that they may have in the school don't just have that ability to immediately go in and start teaching science at a level of rigor and investigation that may be expected. What they may need to do is hire specialists to do this, who come in and can work with different groups of students in cycle through the day. This is one possible transition as we spend more time then developing teacher capacity over time to be able to do some of the more rigorous science instruction. Another component of this is, well, a transition of the students so that instead of rotating teachers around, that part of what we're doing is effectively setting up elementary schools as lab-like stations in different classrooms where you can start rotating kids to be able to focus on different science experiences and rotate them through the course of the year. That way, keeping that teacher focused on their particular area of content, but being able to introduce some different strategies for them. I'm going to skip ahead for a second in the interest of time to the one other challenging area, which is high school. Middle school is kind of an amalgam of the challenges of elementary and middle and high school that we see. So, a lot of the issues there either replicate issues that we see in the elementary classroom or in the high school classroom. Some of what we're seeing in high school classrooms right now around the work that they do largely focuses on, again, that content that we've seen before of a very structured curriculum separated by science areas where students may be doing predetermined labs or investigations as we see in the picture here, with students measuring the motion of a cart rolling down a ramp. Part of what we want to be able to do is build in those practices so that what students are doing is not just a simple investigation of speed compared to the height of the ramp, as this is the case here, but rather that students start working in concepts of engineering and design. What if, for instance, we were to ask those same students, how could you develop a cart that could move on its own to a certain speed? And how could you do that where the cart is doing so using only the power of the sun as an example? Well, it may then involve getting students to start exploring different concepts around new materials and new practices like the use of solar cells and other technologies, initiating different project-based experiences that students could do. Eventually, working up to something like this, that you've seen some examples of from schools like Stockbridge where they brought their underwater robotics equipment in for all of you to see. Here we have a group of students who are not just designing a toy, they're designing and building a solar-powered vehicle. This group of students actually did this and were able to take this vehicle across the country. These are the kinds of experiences that set the foundation for students and build in all of these science practices that we're looking for. The critical issues that we see in this transition to these kinds of practices are, one, we're stuck with the descriptions and reporting mechanisms that we currently have. This kind of experience doesn't fit easily into our physics course description. So, we need to find ways to make that transition so that we're incorporating experiences that are more all-encompassing of the realm of science and the kind of work that we do in science and that are really developing what students and teachers can expect to do in classrooms. Along with this come some changes that we would have around teaching assignments and certification. Given all of the integration and interweaving of content, we're going to need to really think about how we prepare teachers, how we certify teachers, and how schools assign teachers so that it's not just saying, Mr. Varner, you're going to be our biology teacher for the year.
It'd be disastrous.
Another key issue, as I mentioned before, is having relevant data and supports, especially at this level. We've been building out a lot of the systems for individualized work for early childhood so that we can ensure students have basic literacy and numeracy skills. We don't have it really at the high school level for understanding where kids are struggling with concepts or other things. So, these are issues that we need to incorporate. The transition for this is going to include issues like the realignment of curriculum and courses that we have in the high school. Part of what you will be getting in a mid-month report is a set of resources that have been developed to aid teachers in these kinds of transitions, understanding different models for how you can restructure courses in your school to be able to address those cross-cutting themes and address issues of engineering and science. Another issue will be personalization or modification of instruction so that it's science instruction, especially at the high school, is not done with a person at the front of a room and 30 people following doing the same thing, but rather that it follows the model. As I look at Melody, a wonderful elementary educator who recognizes that you need to have different kids doing different kinds of things in the classroom and personalize their experience. That's another piece that we're going to have for transition. Finally, as we can see in the example here, we'll end up with a transition toward programs that are more along the lines of career technical education or middle-college kinds of programs where we're focusing on application of these concepts of science, in part to prepare students for the world that they're going to live in, but also to ensure that they're motivated, that they're excited, and that they're actually doing the work of science and not just observing it from afar. In our, as we looked, sorry, to the, to continuing presentations here, as I mentioned before, we're going to be, we've looked at some issues today around what it will take in terms of how schools are structured, how classes are structured, the materials they have. The next thing that we're going to be focusing on is around how we prepare teachers for these experiences, ideally moving toward the point where we can really examine what we have in terms of what research is telling us about science education and be able to make some decisions for how we should best progress forward as a state around these issues.
I'd like to just continue that thought for a moment, that one of the things I would think the board could have a major, major impact on, given that none of us are listened to sometimes down the street, is an encouragement and maybe a set of recommendations that we could provide, we could put together for the board to encourage and maybe more the deans in these areas. So, as we're working towards the issues related to science, and you could see how, Stephen, by the way, you can see how in-depth his understanding of this is, we could prepare a number of recommendations or encouragements for you and with specificity so that the 32 deans in schools of ed would have an understanding of their role in making this a reality. Because not only would it be appropriate as a state board, but the other thing it would do, I think, is if you look at the biggest criticism sometimes deserved is college and career readiness, and one of the main reasons that that measure, which is a little bit overstated, is so low is because of the four issues on the ACT, for instance, that are measured, the science one is always so low that therefore it makes it look like, when in fact, three of the four are met often by many, many students. So, what I'm getting at is there's lots of reasons. We don't have enough engineers. We have, to Stephen's point, the pharmaceutical industry that could use folks and have jobs ready if we had more scientists and engineers. It would help this image that somehow we're not carrying our own weight with college and career readiness, and I think deans would take this very seriously from the state board. So, it's another way, in addition to kind of our legislative approach to try to get policy. This is direct policy that I think you could and we could have an impact, and if you'd like, after discussion, we could, as we march on this journey towards the revised standards, we could provide specific recommendations that we would encourage that the board issue. Kathleen.
I think this is really exciting, how you've been working on changing the teaching of science because in elementary school especially, I think a lot of teachers are not comfortable teaching science, and they really, there's going to be a need for a lot of professional development, it seems to me. With my own children's experience, I know, my own, but my own goes back a long time, but my children's didn't have the best science education in elementary school. So, I think it's really exciting, but I'm thinking that we've been getting these now for three or four months, we're going to have another one, and how do we educate the, talk about parent education, how do we educate the legislature so that they know without going through four months of, they're not going to do this, have presentations like this for four hours or whatever it would take, I don't think. How do we educate them so that they go to accept when we want to adopt next-gen science standards, which I assume we will do one of these days? That's a major issue. We're educating ourselves and we're educating people who happened to tune in to the board meeting, but I don't know about legislators.
That's a very good point. I know we're leading up to kind of perhaps a December agreement on the part of the board on this, and maybe there's a, maybe for Wendy, Ben, Marty to be thinking about, key legislators, chairs, and others to be bringing along as we go along. It's also-
The new legislature, January, and I think we ought to think now about educating the education committees and the appropriations committees of the new legislature very early in the game, not just a reception and greetings, but some very meaty program of what we're doing on curriculum and education so that they know, we're working on this, it's just not pulled out of the air.
Right. That's a good point. And I mean, at the same time, Kath, maybe that's our way with a new legislator to say that's why it's a state board responsibility to do the standards because it takes all this time and immersion.
This is our role.
Yes, ma'am.
Throw that out.
Yeah.
I just wanted to elaborate on what Kathy said, but I also have some other comments. There's no question, everybody agrees, that we need to do STEM standards. I think the question and the debate, especially given the number of both, actually Democrats, Republicans, and independents now who are polling saying that they oppose Common Core, it's not just a Republican thing, it's an across-the-board reaction to what's being perceived as national standards. I think that my strategy in all this is to lay the foundation for having to do something much better and much more comprehensive. I'm on the Michigan Science Center board. My husband and I bought the Science Center to save it, to get it, to keep it going. I mean, this is not, when we talk about the quality of the debate on the board on this issue, I'm deeply, deeply invested in good, solid STEM standards. But the reactions that we're seeing now to Common Core nationally say to me that what we need to do is to go through a process and say, let's take Next Gen, which I gather is a step that's going to be involved here. We are going to be looking at the Fordham evaluation of Next Gen to see what their concerns were, and then figure out whether we're doing something very like Next Gen developing it with our own teachers or whether we're adopting Next Gen. So, there were, a year ago when we brought this topic up, there were real concerns from Bill Schmidt at Michigan State that the math alignment was not consistent through Next Gen with Common Core or with Michigan standards. If that's the case, we have to figure out what that means because we cannot throw another set of standards at teachers and at schools and expect them to juggle things that aren't reconcilable through state standards. That's one thing. But going on to my reaction to this, bravo, brava. I love it. And I've already said that I'm on the Michigan Science Center board, which is trying to figure out what role they can play statewide in the southeastern Michigan to move beyond the science kid approach to all these disciplines. And I wanted to say a couple of things. One is I'm really struck by the applicability and the thoughtfulness of this presentation for all subjects because the way that you're approaching this and the way that instruction could take place for children in an integrated fashion is stellar. So, I wish that everybody just could see this one in the legislature. This is a different view of the department's work than they usually get in testimony. This is a different view of the department's work than they usually get in testimony, and it's really vital. I also wanted to say that one of the things that I find so problematic now with the kinds of children that we have in the classroom, including my thirteen-year-old son, is that we don't have any hands-on stuff going on at home. It used to be that people tinkered and potted and had a nine-million-item list of honeydews, and everybody had it, you know? It didn't matter whether it was just trying to figure out how to screw the outlet plate back on the wall so that you didn't get electrocuted when you took the plug out, to, you know, building weird things in the garage. And we have a friend who is only a materials engineering bachelor's degree, who is the head of product development and company acquisition for a major automotive company. And he talks about having to use physical science, materials engineering, mechanical engineering, biology. I mean, it just keeps on going, every math discipline imaginable. And when they solve something now, it could be a chemical solution for a new material. And I think of, this is the last monologue I'll have on the subject, but I think of the people who last year discovered that dung beetles navigate by the stars. You know, how they ever put that together to come up with a behavioral issue of where those dung beetles push those big balls of yuck? Did you know that? And they did, they did like a triple experiment and finally realized that they really can't get the ball back to their nest when the stars aren't out. So they put them in with little hoods in a planetarium and tested them in mazes with their dung balls and figured out, oh, my gosh, they are navigating off the stars. So I only bring that up because it's so weird and wacky that it illustrates where kids are going to have to go. And hopefully, not everybody's going to be researching dung beetles, but there you have it. So I wanted to ask really quickly if you could comment on one thing that has been both a matter of great pride for me and concern, and that is our emphasis now on robotics in high school. I'm really concerned, I think it's terrific that we're exposing so many children to engineering in that fashion, but I believe we're leaving behind a lot of kids who won't, for home engineering in that fashion doesn't really work. I look at Stockbridge, for example, which is doing engineering through, it's a completely different application. And I'm worried that we're going to get too far out and think that that, for me, it's not a Band-Aid solution, it's a, it's a really wonderful program. But I'm worried that we're going to start thinking that that solves too many other things.
Right.
And I'm, I'm really concerned about how this is all going to work for gen ed.
Well, and I, I think, you know, that one of the issues you could look at with regard to that is just the number of kids that are in programs like First Robotics compared to all of the students that we have. It reaches such a small subset of our student population. Because of the nature of that being, in many cases, a separate class or a separate program done after school where you're competing against the interests of sports and band and community interests and church and all of the different kinds of things that kids are involved in, and it's a, it's a tough issue just to get access to that. The, the amount of access, once you're there, is limited. You can't really have a school team of four hundred kids working on a robot. And so that becomes a big challenge as well. And, and I do have, I share that same concern that the view of that is considered, okay, now we're addressing STEM, there it is, and we're not really doing that more substantially through, through schools. And so I think a lot of what I talked about here tries to address that issue of incorporating all of those engineering practices, and it's not just robotics, by the way, which is another kind of misnomer for that. Robotics and, and that work sits within a very small piece of the broader realm of engineering. And, and we don't want to say that that is addressing all that we have. We want to incorporate it into students' experiences and do that from early on up so that kids understand that in second and third grade, they can be doing design kinds of experiences that get at basic principles of engineering and design based upon very simple understandings of concepts and then develop them out there.
Yeah, and I would also say that's why we're sitting here working on new solid STEM standards and an overall redesigned approach to science instruction, STEM instruction in the state, because that will reach all of our kids versus sitting here promoting a programmatic approach. A programmatic approach fits within a larger approach that is built on a foundation of solid, integrated science standards and quality instructional practices and professional development, to Kathy's point, and teacher supply pipeline of teachers who can do this, to Mike's point about integrating the deans. So we echo your concerns, but we want, that's why we want to take this holistic approach so that all kids, all Michigan kids have this access to this sort of science education.
And then we need to call on everybody to start cooking so that kids can see what happens with, what happens with leveling gauges. It's all those things that people used to have time to do that aren't happening in the home that really cripples a kid going into science and doing that, right?
Cooking is a good thing to teach chemistry.
Cooking is a wonderful science activity.
Math and math.
Exactly.
Anna's been encouraging me to quickly get a hobby before retirement. I think I'm going to study the dung beetle. This is very fascinating, Ron. Richard, and then Dan, and then John.
I, well, I've expressed this concern before, and, and it's kind of embedded in this presentation. You know, science instruction for high school is altogether different, different animal from instruction in elementary because of developmental issues and ability to deal with abstractions and things of that nature. I, I, I remember the new math where we tried to teach elementary kids math theory, and of course, it bombed because of developmental issues. I'm fearful of some of the same issues here as we try to, as the, as the, oh, what's the, the framework for instructional science puts it, you know, projected back into early grades, which is not a developmental way to, to develop curriculum. I'm also very troubled by the nature of this presentation, which stressed the discontinuities. We are asking for trouble when we stress this is something new that's going to change everything. In your own presentation, you suggested we're going to alienate the parents because they won't know where we're coming from. We've got a lot of teachers that don't know what they're doing. Well, if parents and teachers, the two main factors in student success are going to be troubled, this, this tells us at least that there's going to be a big cost to this shift or this change. Now, I don't believe that there has to be that cost. I, I think that if we stress the continuities, if we acknowledge that we have always, I mean, I, I took science, I taught some science, and, and we all, you know, the old curriculum, the old standards incorporated patterns, cause and effect, scale, proportion, quantity, system, system models, energy, matter, structure, functions, billion change, all that was in the old standards. Let's not pretend that this is something new. Now, what is, I think, genuine and valuable is stress on, on engineering. We've been talking about cross-disciplinary integration for a long time. That's, that's been fashionable in many circles for about twenty years. That does present real challenges in terms of, you know, how do we make sure that the kids who have spent four years doing robotics have gotten enough life science, okay? And I think that, that example itself is a bit of a distraction. You can excel in robotics the same way you can go to the Olympics, but you go to the Olympics because you spend six hours a day skating and you, you give up certain other things and is our, and there too is, is, there's a trade-off that we haven't really identified. We haven't made a hard decision. Do we, is our object to get kids to excel in one field of science and pursue their interest, or is our interest that they have a broad grounding and grasp of many disciplines or many aspects of science? And, and it is, it's inherent in, in our problem. Do we want a curriculum to, to produce a few stars? Do we want a curriculum that will produce that, that readiness that, that we want, career and college readiness for all students? So, so what am I really saying here? I, I think, I think that going forward, we really need to stress the continuity. There have been ideas that have been fashionable. A good example is, you know, hands-on science. We thought that was going to really help kids do well in science, and then lo and behold, it's not the, it's not their science grades that are the predictors of how well kids will do in secondary, in high school science, but turns out to be their reading grades, okay? I think that's an important insight that's brought here. It also, we, we don't like to admit it in science circles, but, you know, that, that reading is a priority. You've got to master these skills before you're ready to benefit from the kind of science concepts that, that we're talking about. And the same thing pertains to, to math skills. You have to have, I mean, if you want to understand proportionality, you've got to have some, some math skills. And so that, that does suggest a certain hierarchy. So, you know, social studies and science are not equal with math and reading. They, they're an outgrowth of math and reading. So I, I think that we need to acknowledge some of that and as we look at these. So, so my, my, I would earnestly, not, not only for the, not only for the public relations aspect of it, but because I think it's closer to the truth to emphasize the continuity between the new science standards and, and the old ones. I think that a lot, fewer people will be, I think, will be a lot less prone to misunderstanding, and we've had a, we've seen a heap of that with the Common Core. And frankly, I think it's because Common Core was oversold with, with the idea that this is going to change everything. What ain't going to change everything? I, I think it's, might be an improvement. It might be a help, but it's not going to change everything. And now, I've had to spend the last two years trying to convince people that, you know, it's not going to change everything, it's just a, you know, an improvement over what we had before. But on the other hand, someone pulls out a, a professional development brochure that says, you know, Common Core's going to change everything and you need to get this seminar or you won't be able to teach. Okay? So, so I'm concerned with some of those issues here.
Why don't we, that's really good food for thought, and as we, one of the things we're hoping to get is what we're getting today, which is some further thinking as we keep marching towards adoption, and we'll give that some thought. I think it's a very good point about the continuity or the, or freaking people out before we get to it. And by the way, thank you for working with folks on the Common Core, because I know that, that's a good lesson probably for us to think about. Thank you. Dan, and then John.
I think Dr. Z, in your response to his remarks, perhaps stole a little bit of what I was going to say, but I'll just quickly, I guess, ask the question anyway. And so I should say, three questions. So the first one is, so who, so like, these discussions frequently, I think, kind of land as discussions among technocrats, you know, like who are science experts in curriculum? Like, so the average person who's not taught and like, what was that? You know? So who is thinking about the, the politics of, I mean, if I can, and sorry, Eileen and Richard, because you weren't just talking about the politics of, but, you know, who is at the department thinking about the, literally just the politics of Next Gen science standards? I guess is the question for you. Second is, so I was struck by the, and thank you, this was really illuminating, albeit technocratic. I actually found, I actually Googled in the middle of your presentation, is there a finite amount of energy in the universe? Just because something you said, actually, it's me, so. There seems, there's a, there's a robust debate about it, although the abundance of evidence seems to suggest, well, most commentators, at least on the page I was looking at, seem to think that there is, but far be it from me to-
It wasn't TMZ, was it? That was it.
Right. So second, all these changes that you articulate at the classroom level, the building level, the LEA level, you know, the district level and so on, I'm, I'm wondering, from your perspective, what are your, so all of those are levels that you have no, no active control over, right? I mean, you don't actually dictate what happens in the classroom or what actually happens at a school building, or even what actually happens at a district largely. To some extent, you know, but largely, you don't get to dictate that. What are your most effective levers, do you think, for actually incentivizing, allowing, encouraging changes in science instruction and the like? Just so that we're thinking about it from this governance level as opposed to from the practice level, where I just worry we actually don't, you know, aren't able to make the kind of everyday kind of impact and changes. And then, while you're thinking about the answer to that question, the third one, just as a, so for the next presentation, where we'll talk quite a bit about the professional development and so on, we've also had this ongoing conversation about, not conversation, but kind of questions about ISDs, and I, self-admittedly, have not nearly enough knowledge about what ISDs actually do, and I have a sense that they're engaged in professional development support. Would love for you to expound on that in the next presentation so that we can maybe marry those two things.
Good thought.
I would take a shot at a little bit of that and give them more time to think about the real answer. The ISDs, it's, it's literally a capacity issue. Those that are, have the right staffing, as when I was at, as a superintendent, is heavily involved and I think appropriately involved. But it's one reason we pushed for, at some, with some blowback on ISDs should only exist if they can offer all the services, and some can and some can't. That would be my take on the ISD piece. And the ones that do it, and the PG part especially, do it very well. I would add also that your bigger kind of system issue, part of it would be the deans and the schools of ed. We've got this pipeline rigor, because as Melody knows, my daughter knows, a hundred thousand teachers, you close the door, you kind of do what you want. So it has to be with a training and understanding of why they would do it, and that's my, why my opening comment about the deans was, I think, part of that. And then, on the politics part, I mean, we can use your help on that. There's been, Kathy had a comment about it that's thoughtful on legislative prep, but we're not, we can use help on trying to understand how to get to there. I thought Richard's point also about, you know, trying to, if we unintentionally freak people out about this change, before you know it, you've gotten other parties that would have been fine on it. So this is, this discussion even is helpful, but that's what we're leading towards, is what's our, our overall strategy. It just would encourage it, any addition-
To build on that, to Mike's point about, and your question about ISDs, one of the other very effective tools we've been able to use is the organization, it's the overarching group, which is MAISA for the ISDs, and they have come together and brought the ISDs with the greater capacity to the table to write suggested unit plans and lesson plans against the Common Core state standards, and then have conducted professional development sessions across the state that have proven to be quite successful. So that's one of the roles that the ISDs have been able, have been able to help us with, is bringing together their skills into a common then approach where they used to do disparate things, so now they're, they're approaching that commonly. And then we do have a lot of organizations that will be able to help us with articulation of the change, and Steve could probably address it a little better.
So we have been working with a number of groups. For instance, Michigan Science Teachers Association, Robbie Crin, the president, is, is back here, sitting next to Jen Arndswald from the Kent ISD, who does a lot of work supporting teachers in those ISDs. And that's really one of the key components of those issues that you were talking about of how do we build capacity out and what is our role here when we are several layers distanced from the classroom ourselves? And part of that is being able to convene and work with different groups that we know have, have different kinds of capacity in the state. Being able, as mentioned earlier, to be, to work with higher ed institutions, to be able to focus on what kinds of things can we do in teacher education and teacher professional development to build this out and do so in efficient ways that aren't just hittering us, hitting a smattering of, of people, but really addressing broad issues. And then I think the other aspect of this, and I want to mention this in part to respond to that question and in part to respond to Dr. Zile's questions and comments as well, is that when, when you're introducing some new, new concepts, new ideas around instruction, one of the big challenges is on the various levels of implementation. So you may have all of the training that you want, but if your school's schedule doesn't change, you're really bound by that constraint to be able to make the kind of progress that you want. And I think that when we look at these kinds of efforts, and some of the ones historically that were- that were mentioned that have seemed like fads, well, it's not that they were fads. They were built upon a solid research foundation. It's that the implementation fell apart because we didn't think about the system as a whole. We thought about one piece of it. And so that's where I think our capacity as the Department of Education lies, is being able to look at how we can look at school improvement to integrate with this so that those efforts are connecting with what's going on in science education, that they're connecting with the data resources that are being developed out for schools. So that they can see what are the challenges that we in our particular school have. It's making the connections work. And I think that is really a foundational piece to this. And I think admittedly, it is a challenge and that's part of why I wanted to share that here, but it is also one where we have so much opportunity as long as we recognize all of these integrated pieces of the broader system.
And I just want to build on that because I think the question is an excellent one about governance and how we reach instruction. And so I think we have levels of things we can do so we can require things, but requirements only get you so far. So part of it is us making sure we have aligned requirements. We have standards, we have assessments, we have school improvement plans that we align all our requirements. So at least we're driving toward the same thing, that teacher certification aligns with this, that EPI accountability aligns with everything, not just with this. But then we've been trying to move toward a model of, there's things that we don't have to require, but we can incentivize or we can promote. And you can take the early adopters and the fast followers, to use that language, and show good practice and have people at schools and districts and teachers make their own choices based around wanting to move student achievement forward without a requirement. A requirement, you're always going to get the bare minimum. And so the department tries to balance our policy levers of requirements along with best practice. And then the third piece of that is how can we build structures to support the best practice? So things like the multi-tiered system of support, or multi-tiered systems of support that Steve referenced require certain types of data, require certain types of best practice banks. We can facilitate those sorts of things, but that's not a requirement as much as a tool that supports instruction because instruction is distant from the department. So we wrestle with this a lot, but I think those are the three pieces to the department impacting instruction in a positive way.
Excellent.
Could you just give me those three again? I just feel like we're going to come back to that.
Requirements, aligned, and particularly aligned requirements. So that is our, we have, as a department, the ability to enact requirements. Then what sort of best practices can we incentivize or promote so we don't require that people adopt it? But if you are making good choices on behalf of students, you might want to look at this. And then the third is how do we build structures that promote and support not only the requirements, but the best practices as well? That would be data systems, sorry, toolkits, I know.
And you know, I would just add one thing, is almost a cultural issue that there's a fair number in the field that I'm not even finding fault with, it's the world they're in, but could be just send us the money and leave us alone. So if that's a cultural issue, even in a local district about local control, then some of these issues are difficult to leverage as hard as one might try. I think it was John and then Michelle.
So I just wanted to flag and echo some of what Mike was suggesting. I think the key to both developing the best approved standards, supporting their implementation and even getting them politically supported is what we're doing through this process and even this discussion today. So it should be very clear that as we're pursuing, we are drawing on terrific expertise about how to think about teaching science, drawing on the expertise of Michigan of science education and its improvement, drawing from whatever's a quality that we like in Michigan, from Next Gen, from critiques of Next Gen, from other STEM science delivery approaches. So that whatever, and being responsive to this kind of discussion. Richard has an excellent point about the nature of how we articulate and put in place our standards. It's going to be incorporated into what we are ultimately approving. And so it should be very clear that this set of science standards, whenever we adopt them, will be Michigan grown, Michigan baked, and will be our best version together with terrific expertise and help from you all about what is the nature of the change and also really paying attention to how do we help people learn to deliver it and support its implementation, which is so critical, which was so clear today. And so this process is about Michigan developing its next standards for science, its improvement in science, which will be our standards. That is also important, I do, as the legislature, with Richard's help again, we persuaded them to continue to support us and implement Common Core. One of the things we said is we would be very aggressive in briefing them, talking with them, sharing the rationales for why we're putting together the standards that we're doing in science and need to schedule that and not to give them a veto, but to give a lot of more communication about the nature of the standards that we're doing.
Have we been doing that?
And that's what we should plan to do per year and per year.
Yeah, but have we been doing, have we been doing that?
Well, we wanted to, this is all part of a process that we want to make sure we're understanding all the issues related from the board's point of view, which has been very helpful today, was last month, and I hope will continue to be next month. And then have that as part of our plan. That's exactly where we're going. But you know, to your point, Kath, it's also with the new legislature will be important. But we needed to flush a lot of this out. There are a couple of insights today we did not have. That's helpful to us developing this strategy. I think it was Michelle and then Richard and then Melody and then Eileen.
Just very quickly, I think this sounds really exciting and I think it's great and I wish my kids would be young enough to take advantage of it. But when you talk about the scheduling and, you know, some of the other things that are sort of in the building when the doors close, I know my husband's negotiating his, working with his school, trying to get a contract. And one of the most contentious issues for the teachers in the district to grapple with was scheduling. I mean, it was really, so I'm, and that's a negotiated subject of bargaining. So I'm just wondering if there's any outreach to folks from the school boards and from the unions to get them in to maybe help work out some of those issues that might, you know, they might be able to foresee what would be the problems and maybe work on a solution before it gets, you know, give them a model that would work out for everybody.
I think that's a great point and it's a good candidate for that incentivize or promote or educate kind of bucket that we wouldn't ever require a structure of your high school schedule this way. That, I mean, we don't have that authority, but here are some models. If you want, to Eileen's point about this is a good presentation for all subjects. If you want instruction to look more like this, here are some best schedules. And teachers want scheduling that supports their teaching. So if you can give models that work, maybe, you know, help soften the discussion. So I think that falls in that bucket and that's a good point about some of the partners to reach out to on that.
Very helpful, thank you. Richard and then Melody, Eileen, Kathleen.
Kind of a coda to some things that John was saying before. I think that MDE, like the state board, are, you know, we don't have a lot of power to make people do things, but our real authority is in influencing decisions by having strong, coherent, clear ideas. So being able to clarify our thought and identify the persuasive aspects of it is what will do us best, whether we're trying to communicate the new curriculum to teachers or legislators. I think that the same instrument can probably be used for both audiences if we just are, clarify our own thinking.
Good point, yes. I think it was Melody and then Eileen.
I just want to share my perspective from a teacher's standpoint and from an elementary classroom standpoint, that this is all very exciting to me and the idea of the cross-cutting concepts that will integrate the subjects together better. You know, I can think about the patterns and the cause and effect that are already taught through language arts and through math and how that can be integrated in with science. And I also think, you know, Richard mentioned developmentally. I know that kids have a natural curiosity for science and actually are engaged in science well before they can ever read or do math or maybe all of those things are put together. So I think this will be really important in the elementary level. My question is just with the timeline being, you know, six years down the line, if there's any plans to pilot some of these things with new scheduling and with new materials? Because I know, I was never a strong science student and I was nervous about teaching science, but I had to learn matter and energy and study it like I was in college in order to be able to teach it. So I think teachers will be able to teach the content as long as they're given the right materials. So I'm just wondering about piloting materials and resources and the new scheduling and different things like that before it's really presented so that you'll know what works best.
We usually do go through a series of possibilities. So pilots, best practices, I think is the term that Vanessa's been using, to find those things that we can roll out to the general teaching population across the state. And so we would utilize good thinking. We would meet with teachers, we would meet with, we'd use the teachers' groups of science and whatnot to help us put some things together along with MAISA and their role in building units for us and then roll that forward. We aren't doing that yet because we would be way ahead of the ballgame if we started putting all those pieces together. If the standards aren't something different, we don't need to go there. We need to examine some other possibilities, so that would come next.
Thank you, Melody. Eileen and Kathleen.
My question is on assessment because if teachers don't know how to teach science well, then that means unless they've had very good teacher prep or in-service training on developing assessments, they're going to be at a loss. And there's local assessment, school-wide assessment, and there's statewide assessment. So I have a couple of questions to ask. You presented at the last session a very interesting in-school performance metric for students that made sense to me. And one of the problems that we have with SBAQ is the fact that the for-profit testing companies never developed a product to assess Common Core.
Thank you.
They got caught, so. So I, you know, I see something like that and say, was that school developed or is that an available tool that's a purchased one that schools can afford for science instruction? And if it's the latter, then the question I would have is, I know that Next Gen, that there is a move to develop units. I believe that MSU is working on a Next Gen unit for an assessment. But at the same time, and your schedule, if we went with Next Gen or went with something that was similar enough to it, that that would be a decent assessment, we know that that will be a Cadillac, hands-on, like the NAEP assessments, that that will be a very forward-thinking, practice-based assessment. But until then, or if we don't align with that, is there anything on the market commercially that schools can afford that we could ask people to say, please take a look at a larger statewide assessment based upon how you're doing this, it's good, and make sure that teachers are not going to be caught in a bad spot on this?
Right now, there really aren't a whole lot specifically around science education. Though the efforts that are out there are often assessments that are tied in with model programs that have been developed through some of those same kind of research-based examples. Look, you mentioned Michigan State University as an example. Knowing Joe Krajec, who's one of the faculty members that are working on that effort, he and other educators from around the country have been engaged in these kinds of practices focused on their own particular core area, not only developing strong instructional resources, but then developing some of the assessments because they recognize that a key component for teachers of being able to engage in this kind of instruction is that you're able to use formative assessment in an ongoing manner to see, gauge where your kids are and not just gauge it at the end of what you've been doing.
And what's working in your classroom.
Exactly. And so much of that, it doesn't, I should say, it doesn't reside as standalone assessments because they tend to be integrated with some of the instructional resources that are out there that have also been developed toward these ends, focusing on those cross-disciplinary practices and other pieces. So there are things out there, they just aren't what we think of as the traditional assessments that are available for purchase or through vendors for schools.
So when we adopt new standards, then like Linda said about the piloting, it's the same thing. We have, once we get to new standards, then we need to start on what are the formative assessment practices for now? And then how do we build a larger over time, somewhat of an interim assessment? But the standards have to be fully adopted and integrated into practice before we can assess it authentically. So it's good to know what's out there now, but I think Michigan would be a part of the, on the forefront of figuring out, how do you understand and assess these sorts of practices?
Kathleen, and then I'll try to get us back on time here.
Well, I wondered, in view of the discussion we've had, when you were working on developing these presentations, this work, are there people from the science associations, teachers association involved? And administrators and are there other people involved besides people on the department staff?
Absolutely. So much of the input that has been used here has really been brought together from different groups like the ones that I mentioned. One of the, one of the groups that I've had the opportunity to work with and bounce a lot of ideas off, get input from a range of people, is a group that was just kind of established on grassroots very recently, informally called the My Side Group. These are essentially people who, whose work is science professional development or teacher education that focus specifically on these issues of science and building that capacity. They have been very involved in this because they are also the people who are out working with teachers on a regular basis and know what's going on in classrooms and are able to report some of these examples. And some of the kinds of models that we've shared in today and in other presentations of those best practices have really come out of these groups.
And Linda and Steve do an excellent job with the office of fostering and building relationships with a number of content groups and thanks, public thanks to all those content groups who also come to us. There are many in every discipline area. So it's one of our, I think, best areas of connection in the department, honestly.
Oh, good.
We have more time on this next month, so this is an evolution. Today's been very helpful for us to get ready for this next, this next time in whatever that next month is, October, that's the next month.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And we're going to shift, you know, the board granted probationary status for Baker College in 2011. And that was for a three-year period of time that expires in November. So. So during their probationary period, Baker's education, educator preparation performance score has shown steady improvement, that's good, but has not yet posted multiple years at the satisfactory level. So we're recommending a three-year extension of Baker's probationary approval in order to allow Baker to achieve multiple years of satisfactory status before being considered for full approval. This will allow Baker to continue to recommend teachers, by the way. So with that in mind, we have, I'm going to give this a moment here because I can see we're going to... So Joseph and Leah, with that, this is, we're continuing to recommend probationary approval until they have a chance for multiple years of satisfactory. And why don't you build on that, please?
All right, thank you. As Mike indicated, we do have Baker College here. We do have a representative from Baker College here, Christine Schramm, who used to be the NAEP supervisor here at the department. Welcome back. So with that, I'll turn it over to Leah to talk a little bit about the process that we've gone through.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I just want to, I don't even know that I'll actually use all of the slides on the PowerPoint that we have here. Very briefly, as part of the probationary period for our educator preparator institutions, we require several things. One of those is that a committee of scholars is formed. And over the last three years, Baker has worked very closely with their community scholars to fulfill all of the recommendations set forth by the committee of scholars. And as a result of that, I just want to make sure that you understand that this committee has a recommended unanimous approval for an extension of this probationary period. So they do feel comfortable with this extension. Baker has a number of initiatives moving forward in order to improve the status of their achievement. And some of those are hiring additional faculty to provide oversight of their content area preparation curriculum, alignment to new standards and test objectives. They have mentorship with faculty to ensure the fidelity of curriculum of their programs. They've consolidated their core teacher preparation from eight campuses to what they're titling three centers of excellence. They expect to have a promising accreditation visit that was just completed with no or very few findings associated with their accreditation status. So basically, the conversation that we're putting forward to the board today is for you to have some thought. And Mike has approved a proposition to extend that probationary period for three more years in order to give them a longer opportunity to come up with multiple positive ratings. If Baker is satisfactory in consecutive ratings, it's possible... it's possible that we would bring this back to the board and ask for recommendation for full approval prior to the end of that three-year time period.
And in keeping with requests from the board and to honor the role of the board, we are bringing this as an informational item this month to have discussion and bring it back again next month as an approval item.
Baker's probationary approval does expire next month in November.
I just rushed, I did say that, but I rushed my present, my opening to this a little too quickly. So I'll pause next time. Dan, you were first.
So is there a standard policy around how many satisfactory performance scores are typically required before approval is granted?
No, and since we revised the EPI performance score, you might remember we've been here a couple of times for that. We have not established any number of consecutive. But the committee of scholars and the institution and the consultants here at the department felt more comfortable with at least two consecutive satisfactory performances before a recommendation.
And I do think that that does make some sense, given the modifications we made to the EPI performance score that we brought last month where we really did stabilize things so you're not coming on and off. You really have a progression. And I do believe that with satisfactory data next year, they should be at stage zero, which is the best stage right now.
Kathleen?
We approved a moratorium, I think, of adding more teacher prep programs. I assume Baker was in the process before we did that, is that correct?
Right. We haven't put any even on probationary status or received any, no?
I just wonder about whether we need, you know, another, but this was approved before the moratorium.
Cassandra?
A quick question. Is Baker currently accredited through TAC? Or is that, they're in the process for their first accreditation?
In the process for first accreditation request, yes.
Okay.
About how many teachers are in the pipeline each year from Baker?
Roughly, people, broadly, between sixty and sixty-five.
Between sixty and sixty-five, is that what I'm hearing?
And they'd still be able to function and recommend teachers based on this probationary continuation? Richard?
That's sixty, sixty-five, at how many sites?
That's across eight different sites that we're now consolidating for three sites.
Okay.
Any further? Great, then we'll bring this back next month for formal approval. We'll go from there. Thank you. The next item is discussion on school organization and finance work that the board has done in great fashion the last couple of months and prior. But I'll turn it right over to John to lead the discussion.
So first, call your attention to the fact that there's a document that was produced, a synthesis by me, that's only two pages. Unprecedented. You know, we've been involved in this discussion and process to try to build some understanding about the nature of issues affecting school finance and possible efforts to overhaul and comprehensively the way we organize and finance schools to get better outcomes for Michigan. It's certainly by way of encouraging the next administration, whether it's a Rush Snyder administration or a Shaw administration and the legislature to, again, seriously take out this need for comprehensive overhaul of the way we organize and finance schools. And we want to put our best thinking forward. And I think we will do that most effectively after the dust settles, after the election, in terms of the nature of recommendations, of the major headlines of change that we think makes sense. We've been hearing from lots of different perspectives, policy analysts, researchers, thoughtful perspectives across the board, stakeholders on what they think the issues and some of the fixes are. And what I wanted to do is to, and we spent some time with this on the retreat. I think everybody here at the table and the staff had a full, really good opportunity to try to share their takeaways from this series of discussions we've had and what they think some of the major agendas for change should be in terms of overhauling and improving the way we organize and finance schools. So what I wanted to do is, again, sort of synthesize or bring together some of those headlines that from us and from what we're hearing and get some reflections from all of you about those ideas, those directions, and where the priorities perhaps should be. We can't boil the ocean, but we can really attend to where we think the major agendas for change in the way we finance schools and organize schools to support their outcomes need to be. And as I said, this document, I think, tries to capture some of the convergence of our thinking and some of what we've heard from our experts over the following, of the recent months. And again, there are big changes and there's more modest. Some would be huge and difficult, some would be perhaps easier to organize around. But I think we need to at least name them and get some feedback. And we, again, I think we'll take this up again and prepare a more fulsome set of ideas post-election. So let me just talk you through quickly what's here in terms of these headlines. One, the proposal A, architects hoped that it would provide a predictable funding flow, that it would be steady. There's lots of reasons why that hasn't happened, but one agenda is to figure out how to finance the system so that there is somewhat of a consistent level of state effort and budget priority with happily everybody wanting to put resources into education. But just one of the facts that I think was striking, as a share of our personal income, we've moved from 3.7% of that income supporting K-12 education to now 2.9%. So just the general budget priority level of effort is diminished. There was a lot of convergence from CRC to what Massachusetts does and some of the leading states, which we did look at the most effective in terms of outcome states, how they organize and finance systems, that differentiating foundation grant based on student school characteristics would be an important direction of change. Differentiate by level of instruction, elementary, high school, by the costs of different types of schools and instruction, by the needs of students who have further to travel or at risk or forth, that there was some differential funding that was an important feature of how we create equal opportunity to get a great education in terms of equity notion that we heard. And for those of you who heard Paul Rubel when he was here in town in Massachusetts, former commissioner, they designed a relatively straightforward process to try to figure out how to weight differential funding. And I think something like that could be done. When we were at our retreat, we talked a lot about if we are putting more resources in any particular places, how do you put strings attached? How do you make sure you're getting bang for the buck, not just throwing good money after bad? I think Mike and others here, Joseph, had some good ideas of how you could fund in return for performance and accountability and with appropriate insistence on best practice. Some version of a formula that helped do that might be a direction of change. And we talked a lot about, and other states who have the best performing systems have found ways to put significant support investment in early childhood and in teacher quality as a fundamental, important, probably the two most important we debated this a little bit last night, probably the two most powerful drivers of increased achievement gains. We heard clearly, and I think I heard it on the radio yesterday, it was a public radio station, where folks were saying, the debate with Glenn Nelson from Ann Arbor and, what's it? A small superintendent basically saying, we've had these reform demands, both from us, higher standards, teacher evaluation, that have not been accompanied by the capacity building, the resources to support the implementation. And somehow, she was talking about EpiPens, you know, here's another one. Doesn't sound like it costs a lot, but it does. So how do we support a system that if you make important reform demands, and this is again what Massachusetts and other states have, pretty clearly, you've got to provide the capacity to move them into B. You can't just demand. Now, the change to our school choice charter and the way we finance that is obviously a huge issue. There are, I think, some important directions of the nature of the changes that we should be encouraging. One is to soften the financial impact, the whip-sawing of resources when people execute choices. And Massachusetts and other states do that by creating a sort of financial glide path. And don't just, you don't lose all the money right away if someone makes a different choice. And there's ways, I think, to attend to that. There are a variety of ways to have some rational way choice and charters occur that don't leave neighborhoods abandoned one day or oversubscribed with really nearly new school creation the next day, whether it's the certificate of need process or, you know, Dan and his group have been very thoughtful about how do we have some sort of rational, coherent community input process to figure out where choice and charters happen and under what circumstances. And we talked last time, and there are recommendations, that whoever's starting new schools, whether it's traditional public schools or new charters, we have to have some sort of expectations of how to ensure quality and that there, we're not adding new bad schools or letting bad schools, whether traditional or charters, replicate as an important feature. There are a number of other important, smaller but big things that need to be changed in the incomprehensible forms. One is what we've talked about, we still haven't gotten an incentive structure that encourages new enrollment, early college credit taking versus discouraging. We have not filled the big hole in proposal A, which is state support for capital, which now includes infrastructure and technology. And there are ways, there are good models, and we heard from some, there's good ways we could equalize, state equalize funding for capital so that all districts could afford to make those investments. And we also certainly need to have a thoughtful, common sense way local districts can raise more revenue. The one that was in proposal A just didn't work politically, the enhancement measure. And so there is a way to, there are various ways to do it. We've seen a number of them, to allow locally raised resources that don't screw up equity and funding disproportionately again. Again, you can equalize it on a regional or statewide basis. Policies that do more with the early warning, and there's some of those coming to avoid the death spiral. The significant gaps in special ed funding that we've seen from CRC and others as they, needs to be attended to in a comprehensive fix. We have, again, these legacies of proposal A that really don't allow comparable values of houses to buy support for local investment. And as Mike and others have been encouraging, more incentives and more regionalization of non-instructional services are important, both money saver and rationalization of the system and continued ways to solidify our pension system. So again, I wanted to get your all's reactions on what you think are the headlines that we need to be encouraging and, again, priorities from each of you about which of these are perhaps most important that we want to make sure we further elaborate as we move ahead, but do that elaboration together and post-election when, after the fur flies.
Thanks, John. Cassandra? And Eileen?
First of all, I want to thank you, John, for pulling this together because we heard from so many different organizations and individuals. And not only that, but received information online. And I know it was probably a very large task to do. So first of all, I just want to say thank you for narrowing it down to two whole pages. That's a feat in and of itself. I think it's a good start, and I think there's a lot of good things in here. But my overall concern is, you know, so often we're given the option of treating the symptoms of the disease. And I think this goes very well with treating the symptoms. So, for example, understanding that different students with different needs have different price tags attached to them. And up until now, we've treated everyone exactly the same because we've said, well, it's all going into one district and they can kind of readjust the dollars as needed. But now we know that that's not really the case anymore because we have a lot of K-8 schools. There's been kind of a disinvestment in high school. Special education students are being lumped into one place as opposed to another. So that doesn't really work anymore. So that's a symptom. The disease, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, and I'm afraid that this doesn't necessarily address the underlying causes of why we have these economic disparities and these deficits in our districts. And that is because we, for the last 11 years, the state has seen a declining student enrollment. Every single year, we lose more and more students. So we have 200,000 less students today than we had 10, 11 years ago. At the same time, we have an ever-expanding infrastructure. So we have gained a net of 160 charter schools. In the same time, we've lost 200,000 students. And when you have a system where you pay based on headcount, that's just unsustainable. And every year, we add more and more schools. And this year is no exception, next year will be no exception. And as a result, we have a, just chaos in our financial education system. And so I think a lot of these reforms would go a long way to kind of maybe slowing down the process, if you will, of our schools ending up in deficit, closing their doors, you know, combining because of necessity, not because it's the right thing to do. Students, basically, students are the ones who are paying the price for this. And so I would just say that while I think these bullet points are good, and I think they might be a really good first step, I think we also need to address the underlying causes of why we are in the situation we're at. And that needs to be part of the discussion as well.
Eileen?
And I absolutely agree with Cassandra that you've done a great job on pulling together many strands of thinking. The things that are missing from my perspective, I look at this as the people who will be receiving it, the broad spectrum of people who'll actually be reading it and that we're trying to motivate to make change. So missing from it is, part of the introduction should be an acknowledgement of Michigan's ranking for overall, Michigan, sorry, I'll speak up, my voice is a little outdated. Kathy can't hear me and she's next to me, I'm in trouble. Is an acknowledgement of the current ranking of Michigan's expenditures, either by state ranking or per student, versus the NAEP ranking for our students. Because that is part of the discussion that we couldn't get down to. We couldn't talk about the schools beating the odds with the money they've got because it may not be something that can go to scale. You know, we acknowledged it and we moved on from it. But you won't get a receptive audience in the current legislature today. I know the report's not going to be out till later. And we may be, we certainly have different people, no matter who gets elected. But the reception that this would receive without that acknowledgement will handicap it. And it shouldn't because we had, we talked about those things. So that's really an important thing. And then in the overall shaping, I thought it was extremely neutral in many ways, and I appreciated that because it might not have been. But there is a sense in here that I got of what is going to be viewed as a cost of doing business if you're in education versus extraordinary and important costs that are similar to retooling factories for whole new product lines. So you'll want to try and differentiate that a little better in this report.
I'm trying to understand your point.
Well, I look at, there's one in here, I hate to get down to nitty-gritties, but there's one in here that talks about making sure that significant education reforms and new demands are accompanied by sufficient resources to build capacity of schools and educators. I think if you can define that as what qualifies beyond the foundation grant, that you'll have a better audience than simply saying, we need more money, we need more money. And that's also why I'm saying it needs to, it has to be prefaced with an acknowledgement of the ranges. I mean, if you look at most of the ranges I've seen, the Census Bureau says that we're number nine in the country for overall funding. I don't, and I've heard that quoted a number of places, there are other estimates, but they're all in the top 15. And yet, when you look at our NAEP ratings, they're all in the bottom 30s. So to not acknowledge that as a situation makes us look as if we're not being realistic. And then the only other thing, one point specifically, John, that I, you don't have to discuss it now, but there's one about rewarding success, but I don't know what that means. I don't know if that's financial or, you know, the kids get into college faster or what the deal is on that. So if you can define that, because if it's more money for schools, but you're also calling for more money for students who have special needs, then what does that look like? then what does that look like? It, you know, some people will think it's a great idea and others won't, and if it's not quantified, it's an issue. And then on two other bullets, the, the last one about the pension system. We have to acknowledge the current efforts to solidify the pension system and, and reduce cost of liabilities and urge continued state support for that effort, okay? Because it, it almost sounds as if nothing's going on with, with MIPSers, which of course it has been. It's certainly a contentious point in the election. That would be a giant red warning flag to everybody who is in the other party. And then also underneath quality early child education, there's been a huge commitment to that recently. So it should also be that we acknowledge the state commitment and we call for additional, sorry, ongoing and/or additional funding as evaluation of needs and student outcomes indicate. It should be linked to something that's quantifiable. So if you, if you take a look again at it back from, I'd be happy to sit down with you and say, good content, you know, context is really important so that people understand that this is neutral. This is not something that's partisan.
Other folks. I think John's doing a lot better than Thomas Jefferson did when they started carving up his Declaration of Independence here. You know, I think, Irene, if I might say, well, there's a pause here, that your point kind of ties into something John said earlier, which is ultimately to make some of this a reality, we need a strategy almost in the same way we're thinking about science, that what's the politics of it, who do we bring on board, you know, how do we increase the chances that some of this would be adopted? So it does have to take some of those thoughts into account, and I appreciate John's opening to that. I would add, oh, please, Michelle.
I just had some questions. And I also appreciate this, and I, and I also noted some of the neutral and terms and just trying to keep it really matter-of-fact. So, one of the questions I had was, when it talks about, well, it's a bullet point here, can I do this? Well, controlling this formula for controlling for, and rewarding success. So, I'm not, the concern that I have, and again, is I think a lot of the policy that we have right now is, you know, we look at, and I've said this a lot, but, is, is looking at standardized test scores which reflect issues of poverty more than anything else. And so my concern is that when we look at rewarding success, we, will it lead to, and how do you control for it not shortchanging the communities that need it the most? So, so I, and I know that people talk about growth measures, but even the Americans, you know, Statistical Association has said the value-added measures are invalid and unpredict, they're, don't they? So, at least in, in terms of measuring, you know, the teacher valuations and, and sort of the input from, from the school, it's more the, the community where people are and, and reflective of, of lack of resources more than that. My question is, how do you, when we're going to be rewarding success, and I agree, we need to reward success, but we also need to really immerse schools in need, and we have so many in need right now financially, so that they can improve.
I think we're gonna, hopefully, need and get a lot of help from everybody here on how we would articulate this notion. I think there was, there's a lot of convergence, I thought we saw, about the benefits of differential funding based on costs, geographic, transportation, different types of schools have different costs associated. And putting more money where you have to provide additional support and services for poor and other areas of differential funding. There was also this notion that, we talked about a retreat, that somehow you've got to find some way to, if you're spending more money, to ensure that folks are operating a best practice or effective learning program and making some headway. And what that looks like and what shape that needs to take is a tough one, but we need help to articulate that, that that should be a contours perhaps of what we want to see recommended. Otherwise, I think, you know, Irene, very sensitive as I am to, we, we do want to build support for some big changes from across the board politically. And, you know, we need to, particularly if we're persuading each other to differentially spend money or spend some more money in new places, we've got to say how, how we're getting bang for the buck, you know.
Right, right.
And so we're going to need to further develop that.
Okay, but it seems like it's got to be, we've got to have those weighted, you know, payment plan as, at the bullet point ahead of it, that the two should go together, you shouldn't just have one, but you should have a way.
And that was, again, there's many imperfections in trying to create a two-page document, including not including many of the issues that Irene and others raised that we want to include ultimately. And also trying to prevent pre-election anyone grabbing a hold of inflammatory language. But, yeah, if those two bullets sort of play against each other, certainly, it needs to be related.
Okay.
Kathleen, please.
Well, I too appreciate what you put together, a really good job, I think, in summarizing a lot of the stuff we talked about. But I agree completely with, with Cassandra's point, that we are creating the problem. Every time we create another, we authorize another school, not we, another school is authorized. It happens in Detroit all the time. I was asked to go to a, an opening of another charter school, and I don't know how many more there are in Detroit than I wasn't invited to. But they keep adding more charter schools and stu, there, there's just so many people in Detroit, and they're, they're losing more and more students for the district. The district has effectively been destroyed. And is that what we want? You know, years ago, when I was, I was proposing the, the full-day, full-service schools, I was talking about the schools as being the hub of the community. And that's, no longer the, the hub, has been taken away from many communities. And it, we've just gone in the opposite direction from what I thought was the right way to go. So it's very, it's, it's, it's very frustrating. And the differentiating the foundation grant, I don't know, 30 years ago for what I, the Senate Education Committee recommended what they, what they called at that time the weighted pupil formula, which was a differentiating. But it was not so much based on cost as what we wanted to do. And the proposal that was passed, Senate-approved, and we couldn't get it approved by the House at the time, was to put more money into the early childhood education for students. So that this class size, it could be really reduced to a low enough level that the kid's on a good foundation in her first three grades, kindergarten, first three grades. And I still think that's a good approach. It's not built on the cost of at-risk or some, it's, 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 every, every child should have a good foundation in the early grades. So that's one different approach that I don't think's been talked about lately at all. It's always putting more money into at-risk, which I want to do too, but how do you set up that weighted pupil formula to do that? So I think the differentiation is very important, I think that's a good idea. And then you're, you're talking about creating a, setting up a commission, and that might work. I just don't want it to take five years. I want it supposed to do something in the next year or so.
Well, that's, and that's, I think, to your first two points, and I'm not going to either expand or explain everything. I'm just going to, we should ignore each other's comments and move ahead. But I think the, as you two view, the root cause of charter choice policy, I do think there are some ways to reform our charter choice policy to have it be effective for learning for more students and financially not counter-effective, so. And I think, what was your second point? Oh, I just wanted to note that we, we always get tied up in, we need this giant adequacy study forever and ever, you know, to define what we need to fund schools. That's why I just wanted to flag what Massachusetts, as they made their formula and, and figured out, how do we differentiate funding, had a relatively short-term, clean process that had educators and experts come together. And it, nothing's perfect, but put some, put some relative weights there. Based on what they think it's needed to educate kids in different circumstances, different kids, and in different types of schools. And, and they baked that into their formula, and it didn't take them five years, it took them six months. So I just wanted to flag that, that potentially could be something to encourage, if we wanted to encourage this direction.
Other discussion points. Richard.
I, I, I really appreciate your bringing this down to two pages, and.
You don't know how hard that is for me. Actually, just emerged that way.
Oh, very good, very good. My, I, I think this is a, a great set of points to consider. I don't necessarily support every, every recommendation here. I, I do think that a lot of these are well worth considering individually. As, as Michelle has shared, I think the devil is in the details for some of them, but.
And maybe for everybody, it would be very, hopefully not just a name in public, but to share back, you know, a more detailed critique. Love this, love this, love this, hey, you can't support, you know, this direction. That's very important for us to get together on, so.
Yeah, okay. So in terms of suggestions to discuss or consider, I could support that as, as a list of things to adopt. I don't, that would be going a little far for, for me, just so you know where I'm, I, where I'm coming from on this.
Michelle?
Yeah, we, when we had these discussions before, I actually had a, a couple of little points I wanted to follow up on. We talked about finding what we wanted to do, finding out how much it costs, and then basing the formula for funding based on what it would actually cost to do, looking at where we are, where we want to go. And I wasn't, I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing that in here. I don't know, maybe it's sort of implied, or is that something that, you know, we, because, so people come up with these formulas based on whatever, whatever's in the pot, but not necessarily based on what it actually, you know, all these demands that we're putting on the schools and what it actually costs to, to do that. So, so is, maybe that could be added, or? The other thing is, just a couple of things following up on what Kathy and Cassandra said. You know, school started, and, you know, I've got two little ones at my house that are, just started school last week. And, actually, three little ones, sorry, so many, I can't keep count. And they, they, they go to the, my community school in Detroit, and it's, and I like my school a lot, and I, but they all, what, were put into the gymnasium, everybody had to go into the gym because they didn't know how many kids they were going to show up, and they didn't know if they were going to have enough teachers for the kids. And I know last year when this happened, my, one of the fir, Anthony was in first grade. He, they, they went through three first-grade teachers for four months. Because, you know, they, they were just scrambling and trying to figure out where they're going to get another teacher and who's coming here. And, and so it is really, it's just to underscore how chaotic it really is at the beginning of the school year. And yet, and also, we have another high school right across the street, we have the Old Redford Academy from yours, and now Cornerstone is located right across the street from, so we have two high schools, like, right, I mean, it's like, in, and Bushna, I mean, we've got more charter schools around our community in Detroit, and every time I turn around, I'm seeing another sign for another one. And it really is, you can see the effect on the schools that the kids are attending because they just don't know who to hire, when, you know, what grades they're going to have, what teachers, and it takes them a while to figure that out. Oh, one last thing, the, the pension stuff. And, and I, and even though I think it's good to acknowledge what's being done on the pensions, I think it's also important to acknowledge the strain that's being created by not having the, the charters or the, or the, and EAA participating in that as well. Because that's a policy that seems to be undermining the pension. So if we're going to have one thing that's, that's good, I think it's important to acknowledge that there's these forces out there that are really creating a liability for everyone else.
Can I mention to, no, please, Irene?
I think charters would respond that they don't receive as much money as traditional schools, and then you'd be in this circular argument, so. But what I wanted to ask about is special ed costs because that's a totally valid concern to be bringing up. And yet, it's my understanding from the work that I did on autism, that one of the problems the department has is FERPA and Headley silos. That I'm, I'm wondering whether this is a legislation cleanup of what, of restrictions that we have for figuring out even where the kids are. I certainly know that was true for autism, we couldn't figure out where they were. And you can't do research to find out, I mean, it's, it's a real, there's a, there's a step here, a building stone, I think, that is missing from anybody's intent to be able to fund. Am I right on that? Flora Jenkins?
On that one, I was particularly struck by the CRC's analysis that we saw. And this was one of their big four fixes that, because they're, I think it's the, the different property taxes are raising wildly different special ed service resources, it's in their report here. And so I'm sure other issues too, in terms of special.
Sadly, we found that the more money a district had, the less quality autism services they provided. It was just crazy stuff. But I, but what I remember was that we, we spent three extra years trying to get data on autistic kids because they're, it, it is so bollocks up. Flora Jenkins knew where some of the problems were. I don't know if there's other staff that had been involved with this in the past. But Michigan State couldn't, couldn't get to anything. And the data didn't exist in the department in a usable way until well into the school year.
Any, any, Joseph or anyone?
Joseph is looking. Because that should be part of our recommendation. To, if, if, even if they gave us more money, if we can't get it out immediately so that it benefits children, it doesn't help anybody. And, and that's something that if it's, if there's departmental knowledge, has to go in this. That's, that's our, that's our perspective and our 14 expressing concerns.
I mean, I'm just wondering, the IEPs, I mean, there's, they have records of who has, I mean, there are records of who has autism.
There's, there's other.
And they get services right now for, for that, and there's, I mean, there's, there's records.
We do have records of whether a student is a student with disabilities, or whether or not they have a, you know, you know.
But whether or not they have a what?
Or services.
Whether students are a student with, whether students are students with disabilities. We also do have some data around primary disability, which would also be important, but we're less, we're less sure about the primary disability data than we are about the student with disabilities flag. There may, I think we need to follow up and really make sure that we're giving you accurate information before we just come out with, yes, we think we can, we think we can.
We'll look at this in our debrief. You know, if I, this is 20 years old now, but when I moved from being a local soup to the Wayne ISD superintendent 20 years ago this year, the disparity in, this is even post Proposal A. The disparity in the bill backs to different schools to fund special needs kids. From a wealthy county in Oakland where we were complaining about our bill back because, you know, the services appropriately needed to be given. But it was a wealthy district and relatively low percentage of special needs kids compared to then going to Wayne with a lower property base in effect and a higher proportion for lots of reasons we talked about at this table. Poverty, lead, you know, there's all kinds of things that contribute to this. And I think that's an issue that, until John said it earlier, I had a note that somewhere is buried in these numbers. You don't quite, so you get the same foundation, but you may have a doubling of what you're actually paying to the county in a bill back. So in effect, it's a deduct that could vary dramatically from district to district. And, you know, I, I wanted to mention the board, I think a model to use, I don't know if the board has thought about it this way, but the work, to Kathy's point, on early childhood over the years here, I think helped us, more than you know, as a department, develop a case to bring to the governor, to, to, to his credit, funded then in two, in two, in two doses, 65 million and 65 million. And it might be a model for how we do this. Because if I can just say this appropriately, I think it's, it's, the, the department itself is seen as not partisan, not looking to, is trying to just move the ball. And as a result, I don't think, I think it helped to get all the guidance and understanding and, and actually some of the key points that were made here over the last few years about early early childhood, that two years ago, then, we brought it into the governor as a budget request, it was accepted. So, what I'm getting at in terms of the strategy of how to move the ball on some of this, some of this is through budget-type process from a nonpartisan department, that would, whether it's Governor Snyder or Governor Shauer, would be trying to do this in a fair way that presented, you know, on all sides. And, you know, I would also add one other thing, so that could be a model, I think, is early childhood as a success. I would also say that I find myself in a bind once in a while, because I don't want to use poverty as an excuse. I mean, I grew up in Brooklyn, and I know, and we have beating the odds schools, and yet, maybe to Eileen's point earlier, the same way that, yeah, we're perhaps in the top 15 in funding, and we're way down the list in NAEP, where do we stand on percent in poverty? Where do we stand? So, maybe it's not a judgment, it's just a fact, it's a fact sheet to show there are issues.
Context.
Context. So, not more money, more money, but this is a context that could be very different, and I think is very different. So, I, even when I'm trying to speak to this point, I'm careful, because I don't, I don't want to project, well, you know, then therefore we can't do this, because it is being done. But is it a heavier lift if you have a state with whatever, pick, I don't know what our percent is, I probably should know.
We've got it in all that material.
So, I mean, but it could be a contextual fact list that demonstrates kind of a reality. And I've found, just to say this directly, I've found, first with Governor Grant Holman, now with Governor Snyder, they're very, both very thoughtful about understanding facts and then acting based on factual metrics that they believe don't have a political bent behind it. So, this can lead towards that, because that's where the action's really going to, the rubber's going to meet the road, ultimately. Well, good first start, John, and on this.
Share, do any additional feedback, and we'll bring something back for more elaborated for discussion post-election, and maybe it is helpful to frame some of the state board policy recommendations with, alongside, you know, more of this context, but also Michigan Department of Education, it's going to, you know, move these sorts of more neutral ones or neutral ones through budget encouragement, but maybe some way to frame it that is in the direction that you're encouraging.
I think a little more specificity would be helpful.
Yeah, well, that's what we need to do.
Good. Thank you, thanks, Dan. Okay, this is the opportunity on D, just before we break for lunch, for discussion, is there any discussion regarding the three grant items, criteria for grant programs? Yes, ma'am.
The only thing I'd like to say is that the math and science centers are getting a grant here, and knowing the quality of thinking that the staff is putting into what science education has to look like in the future, I'm extremely heartened, because two or three years ago, I felt as if we were pretty aimless in that, in the money that we were allocating, and that the, and that really, they, the math and science centers were having to make a difficult choice on a day-to-day basis between supporting teachers in what they were doing and trying to look ahead. So, I'm hopeful that this will be a really productive grant this year, this time around.
Do you want to do our reports before lunch? You're not doing it, I've got a very short one.
Okay.
Should we, do we need to call, go into our regular order?
Probably. The time is now 11:50, and our quorum of the board is present, the State Board of Ed meeting of September 19, 14 is called to order. We'll defer public participation, because folks are expecting it after lunch. Do you want to, well, we don't have, we'll do on new employees when they're due to be here after lunch.
I need approval of the table to give some minutes.
Moved by, this is the approval of the August 12 minutes, moved by John, supported by Dan. Yes, Richard.
I, let me see if I can open those up here.
And while he's opening them, I've given Marilyn a correction to mine.
Yeah, I seem to...
Hard copy help you?
Richard, do you want me to go ahead with my correction?
Yes, go ahead.
I asked for, do you want me to, Marilyn, it's not posted yet, because I gave it to you, do you want to read it, or, it currently says that I'm totally in favor of transparency, she said she wants time to determine what currently exists in statute. And what I remember saying was that I was totally in favor of both transparency and accountability, and that I wanted time to determine what, I wanted time for the board or the department to determine what currently exists in statute, so that our request of legislature won't be a duplication of what we haven't enforced.
Yeah, what are you looking for?
On top of page eight, the second sentence, I asked if traditional districts will be prohibited from starting public schools, that needs to be expanded a little. Traditional districts on this, who currently sponsor failing charter schools. Those are the particular districts that, I mean, without, without that qualification, doesn't make sense, you know.
Have that heard?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I know the figure of, there are challenges in all schools, again, that needs to be fleshed a little, a little more. Could we just delete that altogether? I can't remember exactly the complete thought. There's that.
What, you want to delete it?
No, I think so. I know the original thought was that, you know, charters are accountable and have closed therefore, but we don't need to insert that whole thing in there.
Okay.
Other corrections or additions, deletions? So, with those changes, the motion maker supports the amendment?
So does the supporter.
John and Dan. So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same. Great, thank you. John?
Nothing to report, we'll talk about the superintendent's criteria and search process this afternoon. The power is out still at the Austin House, it's Friday night.
Oh, no.
It's getting old. Talking to each other, you know. So, anybody know how to turn the power back on? Jerry Anderson, the DTE Energy President, his power's on.
But that's so be noted.
The other night.
Yeah, we offered them showers, but, so to speak.
We're commiserating.
Yeah, so what are they saying, it's going to go back on?
Wednesday, though we're hopeful it might be today.
Oh, gosh.
That's it from here.
So, John, if you're isolated over there, if we sort of cushion it outside, John.
Still works, though. Showers have been available.
The advantage of married, the advantage of married kids, when they all went out around December last year, we just went between the three kids' houses, because we lost it for a week, so. You don't want to rush that marriage thing, but I'm just saying, I said. Well, I can work through mine too, then, and be done, and a couple of things, I, partly I've been encouraged to do this even by folks who are considering applying for the job. So, I try to do this individually when they call me, and they also say it's helpful if you go through some kind of things that your month is like. Had an interesting charter authorizer on, and we do have, I feel like I need to keep saying this, because from day one on the at-risk announcement, we were as clear as we could be, that that's like, that's, we are also meeting with authorizers on a metric to talk about improvement, and that we would decide on that at that point. So, that's coming up in the next few weeks. Deficit elimination plans, we had a good discussion at Soup's group, I'm actually troubled by it, because I think the, the lesson that I learned with supposedly approving the 10% pay cut in Detroit, is that it's difficult to be perceived as the chief educator, and then, when we do other things as a department, have any credibility with the field, if it looks like we don't care about teachers, then we're just cutting their salaries. So, we've had some discussions about how much of this should be in Treasury, and we're continuing those. In the final analysis, we don't want to not have a hand in this, because the schools, I went to Ed Alliance yesterday, and they all said, no, 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 don't give that up, we need to have the department with a strong hand in those elimination plans. And so, Kyle and I and others in the department are thinking that through. But there isn't a line item veto, it's awkward, I, I'm on record with all the parties involved that I will never sign one the day before again, I need more time on that, you can't just, because even though you don't have a line item veto, if you had more time, you could say, you just need to go back to the drawing board, you know, and they don't have to technically, but that would be an out. But when you're up against these other deadlines, there wouldn't have been, you know, there would have been problems with getting the loan the next morning and the rest. So, we sorted that out, and, you know, I'm trying to do what I guess governments are doing now, which is use a tweet. Somehow it can, it made things right there, I think. But it's a bigger policy issue about, I was surprised, not only from our own guys the other day, but then from Ed Alliance yesterday, how strongly they felt that, don't, please don't give this up under any change from the department, totally to Treasury, not with disrespect to Treasury, just they know we have understandings they may not. So, we're working through some of that. I do have a quarterly deficit report hearing, this is where under, a couple of years ago, we were, under law now, state soup is required to report quarterly to a joint committee.
Report, what, could you speak a little louder?
We're always, we're required quarterly, state soup is summoned in effect to report, and it's worked out pretty well the last few times. I mean, the irony is, it's a deficit report hearing, and then, once we do our report, which, by the way, our team does an outstanding job in the written report, I'm scripted pretty, very well to try to stay on target, and then the Qs and As are on everything but the deficit. It's just the nature of the beast, and I've kind of, I'm trying to be careful there, but that's where it's been awkward at times, that I don't want to get into a whole other arena. But as state soup, you're asked a question, and trying to respectfully give appropriate answers, that's, that point's always, frankly, that's a challenge for me, every one of these meetings, and we seem to work through it. For those thinking about this job, I mean, the day-to-day work is what I think I've been trying to emphasize more the last, and have done so personally with some people who sought me out. But these are just some miscellaneous, kind of, from the calendar, the consensus for change meeting, it's good to meet with them, these are the folks kind of, I think, pushing the ball on blended learning in particular. Communities and schools meeting one night, spoke there, I think that's, remember when Jeff was here and presented to us, that's really a good group, a lot of respect. Marty always plans, together with the team, but kind of works through an MDU all-staff meeting every quarter or so. ACT, we had our annual meeting with them, and frankly, we got a chance to be direct, I would say, about some of our concerns in, in their issues of, it came up earlier, in their issues of not bidding on assessment, and then, and then using lobbying and politics to influence some of where we are right now, trying to develop a new MEAP and the rest. So, I would say, somewhat to their credit, they kind of got on the table, they thought they should do different things differently next time. What I would say is, you know, I think what gets lost is, the ACT scores for our kids, which should be celebrated, went up two points for college and career-ready, even though that's a tough metric, per my earlier comment, to reach college and career-ready in all four areas, it still went up two points. I think what gets lost once in a while is, that's 10%, it went up 10%. So, I mean, it's, that's tremendous progress on behalf of the teachers and the students here to have done this, and, you know, from one year to the next. And I know some people think it's a cohort issue, but generally not, I mean, these are pretty big cohorts of 100,000 kids or so. I was asked to and happy to help prep for an Arnie Duncan meeting with Jeff Docking, who's a president and agent in college, I think he was trying to help, or he was requested by Arnie to help them think through a pretty innovative program they have on student loans. And it's very creative, in the sense, if kids don't end up with a job, number one, and then with a job based on what their starting salary is, their loans are forgiven directly by the university. Some, you know, Arnie's trying to figure out how to do this to make it more affordable, but I was happy to help think some things through. We met with Lejeune Montgomery, who's the new Kellogg Foundation person, seems like a really excellent, I'm sure they, they aren't going to get anything but the best, and they did, they seem to. I do some sub-meetings regularly, David Judd's office, it was very interesting to understand some of the issues here at the department, Chega officials came in, Becky Rocco brought a group of Calhoun ISD soups that helped us, they not only had some issues that they were concerned about, but it helped us understand on a broader base how we might inadvertently be, how we need to think about a few issues that they brought up, and I think we worked through those well. We did a call with the National Council on Teacher Quality to try to put together a dean's meeting that we would co-sponsor with them. Kirkland articulation agreement, more and more of the community colleges are looking to have these articulation agreements to help kids get automatic credit. Staff dialogue with special education was very helpful for me recently, that was a very good one as a sub-meeting. Library board meeting, Kyle and I, Kyle's first meeting there, and Randy's first meeting as the new state librarian, but it was very helpful. Darkening the dotted lines the other day with the ISDs, to the ISD questions that came up earlier, that is really a good forum to get things settled, and also to leverage, to, I think, Dan's point about how do we leverage some of our non-authority, it's really through this darkening of the dotted line process, so we're happy to continue that. We did Michigan Reads kickoff the other day, at Alliance yesterday. And then finally, yesterday, it was very interesting to see in that Michigan Reads kickoff, which is the same book we're going to use for the culture reading, it's called Acoustic Rooster and His Barnyard Band, and it's written by Kwame Alexander, the author showed up with a couple hundred kids in a local Lansing school, and Yvonne, our former colleague, by the way, I thought did an outstanding job, she's very good with the kids, and got them going, got them in almost a pep rally. And then this gentleman, who one would think, when he walked out, was a Detroit Lion player, who, by the way, good job last night, and then to see him inspire these kids that he's an author, and he's successful, and how he's gotten where he is. So, in addition to the reading the book, I thought it was really excellent for those kids in general, and then really, I guess, I'll end by saying a shout-out to the Library of Michigan for a lot of their work and the foundation there, and then integrating that with the Culture Reading Project, where, as you know, I think you know, grants went out this week, where teachers can apply specifically for money for, through the culture reading, and then each kid will get one of these books, and it's based on a very specific plan by a given teacher on how they would use the book, scientifically, research-based. I think I'll end there. And maybe we'll wait for Melody to laugh to lunch, let her, or would you like to, would you like to tackle it now?
We could do it after lunch, doesn't it?
Yeah, why don't we do that, we're at the, yes, ma'am?
I have a question about the deficit reduction, deficit elimination plans. Does our staff work with the local district at all to discuss with them when they, when they say they're going to cut teacher salaries 10% and then raise class size? Does our staff have the opportunity to talk to them and say, that's really not an acceptable way to solve the problem?
Not under the current structure, I mean, there's no way to line item veto. Now, do they end discussions when we meet with, you know...
Before, before they get to the veto, that they would think about coming up with another proposal, that you wouldn't have to veto, that would be more acceptable.
Right, but they could continue to choose, as many have, to not come up with another proposal. And if they don't come up with another proposal, and our authority is only, does the bottom line work, then you're, you're at a point where you need to approve the deficit plan. Because remember, part of this, the catch-22 on this is that if you don't approve it, state A doesn't flow. State A doesn't flow, payroll, school could close, so there's these pressures that are there. Now, but I would acknowledge, Kath, to your point, that's kind of what I meant by with a little more time than the day before, but I'm not necessarily attributing malice to that, but to get it the day before and up against the loan board was a particular problem, because often what does happen is when we, when our team, Kyle and his team, encourage them to try to look at other possibilities, most of the time they do. But I'm just saying, they're in the driver's seat, that in the final analysis, they can make whatever expenditure decisions they want, as long as it works out that they're moving out of deficit. out that they're moving out of deficit. We've talked about the other day, maybe that law should change, which would give more authority to the department to make some of those judgments.
I would think so, because that was a terrible thing to have to approve. It seems to me, I mean, was it an outrageous proposal?
I mean, it reminded me back to one of the first emergency managers when it was 60 kids in a class.
Yeah, right.
Now, you know, I would say this, somewhat in fairness to those that are having to make these tough decisions, whether it's Benton Harbor, or Detroit, or Pontiac, a lot of it gets at what I think I heard from the board in John's discussion. There's a nonpartisan way to describe the enrollment chaos that has an impact on our kids. So whether it was Cassandra's opening points, you know, about how to, it is, this is what comes to a culmination in almost every of these, every one of these deficit hearings, is they can't get a handle on, you had a terminology, John, for it, I wrote it down earlier, but the way to get a more stable.
Financial glide path.
Financial glide path, or policy that takes into account that this is one of the most single, most destructive. And I think it can be done in a way that doesn't have to deal, perhaps, that doesn't have to deal directly with looking like it's, if I may say this, Ds and Rs on specific policy issues, it's enrollment instability is a problem, and it has to be faced. And then we have limited tools, you know, as I've just indicated, open to more if we were given them. But we're also a local-controlled state. So, you know, in most of these circumstances, I know that's not.
And we aren't.
We aren't, we aren't, but I mean.
You're saying it, but it isn't necessarily true.
I think where the rubber meets the road sometimes, it would be, let's say, of the many, we probably have at any point in time, Kyle, what would you say the number that are outstanding with deficits that we're working with districts on? Is it 30 or so?
Close to 15.
Close, okay, so it's 48. The overwhelming number, as you could tell from the numbers, are traditional boards making decisions with their own dialogue at public meetings about what they want to do to get control of their deficit. So in general, that's usually a good thing. You know, you want them with their public to decide what their cuts are going to be. We maybe would focus on how do you stabilize enrollment and the other policy things that John brought up. But they, so, you know, when you see one that's that, frankly, that outrageous, you know, it was outrageous. And that's why I kind of took some action I thought I needed to on my, on our behalf. But I would say in general, if you think about it, that's, that would be a hard case to make to most of that 48 that, well, what do you mean? Why would you make that decision? We're elected board members in a local community. That's for us to decide what the expenditure cuts are. That's what we would be up against.
Okay, but with Detroit, it's a state-controlled district. Granted, it's under the governor and not us, but Constitution says differently, but I don't know where Mr. Love is today, but.
He's here. He'll be back.
Public participation.
I mean, I understand those points. I'm just saying, in the larger 48 that we're dealing with, it's overwhelmingly the local boards that are listening to their communities and deciding what to cut and make their cuts on their own, and we're trying to respect that. But I understand.
No.
Yes, ma'am?
No, no. But I was extremely supportive of what you did because, as far as I'm concerned, all budgets should start with the teachers and the principals and the needs of all students and then everything else. And in this case, I saw they were starting with the teachers' 10% cut right off the back. And so I want to tell you publicly that I truly appreciate their little Twitter, and praise the Lord for Twitter, that you were able to get that message across, and they thought something different. And I have another point of personal privilege.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to introduce Tom Green. Tom Green is a friend, a colleague, and he will be the liaison from the MEA, and he's a field service consultant in the Public Policy Department. So I welcome him. He will be joining Dr. Michelson. He will be leaving, and then Dr. Michelson will come in the afternoon, but he will be our liaison from MEA from now on.
Welcome, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, lunch?
Other duties.
And we'll come back, John, what we just, 1:00, back at 1:00.
He's just subbing.
No, he's got another responsibility.